I'd like to call this meeting to order. Tonight, we're going to be led in the pledge by Riverdale girls' basketball.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions on the agenda? About the consent agenda. If there's no questions, we're going to change things around a little bit. Go to number six, Mr. Odom.
This is, I'm going to ask Mr. Nolan to come up. We're tonight going to recognize Riverdale High School and specifically our state wrestling champion and our state girls' basketball champion. Mr. Nolan, I want to give you that honor tonight if you'll do that.
Thank you, Mr. Odom. First of all, I'd like to thank you for allowing us and the Rutherford County Board members to have a chance to recognize these outstanding student athletes. They've done a great job. Girls, would y'all stand and come up front here? Bring the hardware. Y'all ignore Alexa, she grabbed the wrong state championship shirt. Good problem to have. Guys standing before you this evening, a great group of young people. They're not only great students, they're great athletes, there's no doubt about that. And what they've done is extremely rare. It's rare to win a state championship in anything, but to do it back-to-back and in the manner that they did it with the bullseye on their back the entire year was truly phenomenal. Were state champions last year, lost a Miss Basketball finalist, best basketball in the state of Tennessee who's now playing for the Georgia Bulldogs, and knew what they had to do, and that was go to work every day, work extremely hard, and get the job done. And they were motivated, they had a goal in mind, and they've done what no school, no team in this area has done, to my knowledge, ever. Back-to-back, and they finished this season playing in the toughest district. And I say tough because Ms. Vick's standing right behind me. Feel anything here in a little bit. They played the best competition around in the state of Tennessee and outside the state of Tennessee and completed this season with a perfect 35-0 record. So that's phenomenal job of what they've done to finish a season like that. They also had two Miss Basketball finalists. There's only three finalists in the entire state of Tennessee, and we had two of them. That's another thing that hasn't been done in a long time. Olivia and Alexa. It's just a great bunch of kids, it was a lot of fun watching them. And they had great coaches, I'd like to introduce them at this time. Holly White, assistant coach, Cassie Odom, and Christian Simmons. Then, of course, the leader of this bunch, I think he knows what we expect now. He's in his first year at Riverdale High School, and all we ask him to do is win 35 games, don't lose any, and he did a great job, Mr. Corey Barrett. And I'm going to have Corey come up and introduce these great young people.
All right, I'll just start from right here. We have junior Rachel Conyers, junior Shelby Davenport, junior Matty Cantrell, senior Tyce Chappetti, also most valuable player in the state tournament, Olivia Jones, senior, Tiffany Lewis, senior, Dre Curtis, he's a senior. He didn't play, but he did a good job, of course, he was a manager. Right-hand man. Alexa Milton, junior, Shaniqua Hurd, junior, Brandy Alley, junior, Molly Cantrell, manager, junior, Destiny Williams, sophomore, Raven Allen, sophomore, Ashlyn Loki, freshman, Kalia Murray, freshman, Lexi, freshman, Madison Compton, freshman, and then Macy Greason, freshman. We have a couple not here. We have one senior that's not here that's on an FFA trip, and that's Jordan Greason. She is kin to Macy Greason. But just want to thank you guys, the kids worked really hard, and we had a great year. And Mr. Nolan, he didn't mention, but today, the final ESPN poll came out, and we were ranked number one in the country. So that's kind of a big one. Thank you.
Yeah, that is kind of odd that I failed to mention that we're national champions. Kind of bad, isn't it? They were ranked number one in two of the national polls at the end of the season, and ESPN is coming to our school the week after spring break. Max Prout is coming. Get them off, there's too many of them. But they're going to present them with the national champion banner, so we're excited about that. This next young man I want to introduce is Mr. Scotty Boykin. Get up here, Scotty. Scotty Boykin's probably the only person in Rutherford County that has a better record than the Riverdale Lady Warriors. Scotty's one of our wrestlers, he's been a wrestler at Riverdale for four years, he's an outstanding young man, he's a leader in the school, and he's probably one of the biggest fans of Lady Warrior basketball. I think he's supported them about every game because he knows what it takes to be a team player. Scotty as a junior last year finished runner-up in the state wrestling tournament, and that was the worst thing that could happen to his competitors because we saw that fire in his eye, and he did not like being number two in the state. So all Scotty did this year was take each match, one match at a time. He finished with a perfect 38-0 and Tennessee state champion. Scotty, real proud of what you've done, son, you've done a great job. And I kid Scotty because there's a picture of him in the last year's yearbook, and he's got this kid in a headlock pinning him, and he's smiling like that. And I said, there's something bad wrong with that Scotty, but hey, whatever you do, you just keep on doing it. Our SRO, Officer Sean Jones, has been working with Scotty since Scotty's, what, sixth grade? Probably before that. And I think Officer Jones may be the only one that Scotty has a hard time beating. Is that true? Can he beat you, Scotty? No. But anyway, I'd like to have Officer Jones come up and say a few words.
Can't say too much more than what Mr. Nolan said. Once again, we appreciate everything you guys do to allow us this opportunity to appreciate what he does and these girls over here did. Like I said, I sat up here and talked for hours about Scotty, he's a great kid, he's got this grin on his face nonstop, he's a hard worker, not only in the mat, but also in the classroom. I think he's holding a 3.15 GPA right now. Got a couple colleges looking at him, so wishing him the best of luck, hate to see him go. Thank you, guys.
Coach, do you have, can we in and go up? Let's give them their chance. You can see yourself on TV a little bit later. I'm trying to say, you might want to do that.
You three, come up, come on, we're all working up here now. Come on. All right, right here, next to me, we have Deja Messenger, she's a freshman. Then we have another freshman, Jasmine Hurd, and then, y'all turn around. And then sophomore Tanithia Stewart.
Mr. Nolan, I just wanted, on my behalf, I guess, congratulate not only the basketball players, but the wrestlers, and appreciate you bringing them tonight. It means a lot to the board. Any board members want to say anything?
I'd like to add, congratulations, of course, to all these, it's tremendous. Mr. Nolan made the comment about how tough the district is. I believe I'd be correct to say that the only losses that Blackman Girls had were to Riverdale, and the only losses Oakland Girls had were to Blackman and to Riverdale. That's how tough the district is here, and it's a compliment to all the schools. And one of the things I found this to be really good about our school system is to see an SRO, the coach of a state champion, and that shows how the SRO program works together with our athletes, and we see that in a lot of places. And so I think not only do we get that SRO side of things, but they add so much to our schools. And so on behalf of all the SROs, I want you to know how much we appreciate what you bring to our student athletes and our students in general, because I know you guys do a great job.
I think from some, my perspective, I was born here in Rutherford County and watched our system evolve and grow, and to see excellence coming from Rutherford County, continued excellence from Rutherford County, gives all of us great pride. Thank you, ladies, and thank you, sir. Very well done.
Anybody else? Mr. Nolan, if they want to leave, feel free to.
Thanks, sir, appreciate it.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Mr. Nolan, are you going to have to build another trophy case?
We're going to have to, that's the fourth girls' basketball state championship.
Those are pretty good-sized trophies, too.
Number nine.
This is a report on high school graduation sites. And I've asked Blackman Principal Gail Vick, she is our team leader collaborative group for our high school principals. We know that MTSU is actually closing Murphy Center to us for graduations in 2014, so the high school principals have gotten together and looked for some other sites for possibly 2014. So Ms. Vick, if you will come up and kind of praise the board of the findings of your high school committee.
I'd like to have one of those go balls in my trophy case. A lot of underclassmen on that team, but we've got some freshmen, too. As Mr. Odom said, Murphy Center, we've graduated there ever since I've been in the system, but they are closing for renovations, and so we've had a little committee of the high school principals to do some research, just to let you know what it has been costing the high schools to graduate at Murphy Center. The facility itself, we've been paying right around $5,300 per school, plus all the other expenses that we incur, and that, for some of us, it's more than others because we, you know, those of you that have been to ours have seen the video screen that we use, and sometimes we have to rent equipment for that. But it runs somewhere around $7,500 total cost for graduation, including the Murphy Center cost. So we did a lot of research, looked at municipal auditorium in Nashville. Well, the first place we looked was Miller Coliseum here. We didn't think that they could seat the kind of audience that we're used to having, which is somewhere between 5,000 and 7,000, depending on the school. But we looked at that first because it was local, and they were booked in May and wasn't willing to work with us at all as far as that being an option. So then we started looking in the Nashville area. Municipal auditorium was one of the places that we looked. The total price for all of the six big high schools, and that's really what we're looking at, are the six large high schools, was going to be $49,503, which turned out to be about $8,200 a school, plus we would have to pay SROs in addition. There is really no parking where that is to accommodate, and there is no handicap ramp, so we didn't feel like that was a good option for us. The next place we looked at was Bridgestone. We knew that would certainly be more than big enough to accommodate us, but really not an option. Their charge was $55,000 a day, and the dates fell within the NHL playoff window, so they said they wouldn't book more than two consecutive days, and if National Hockey League needed a date, they would cancel. So that wasn't an option. We looked at Allen Arena at Lipscomb, which would only seat about 4,500. We got it submitted as far as their events manager, and we got no response from them. We got no response from Belmont, we got no response from Vanderbilt. So the bottom line, the most viable option that we see is the Williamson County Expo, the agricultural center. It's where the wrestling, the state wrestling match is held, if you're familiar with that. Seating-wise, they can accommodate 6,000 for an event, that is with 4,200 seats, and they actually have a standing area that will accommodate up to 1,800 people, so that, you know, we can accommodate our crowd, we feel like our crowds will be reduced somewhat just because we're going to have to travel out of town. Their charge is, we figure about $4,500 for everything, and that's including some of the extras that we paid for at Murphy Center. We'll have to pay to bring in chairs, we have to pay security ourselves, we have to pay for a stage. So we have it figured at about $4,500. The facility itself is charging $2,500 per school. So it's really a little bit cheaper. What we have run into, our graduations would start on Wednesday, May 21st, of course, 2014. We could have Wednesday, we could have Thursday. Williamson County schools have already booked that Friday and Saturday, so we would have to skip the Friday and Saturday. We could schedule a graduation on Monday evening, that's May 26th, but that is Memorial Day. And what we have run into on that is because it is a holiday, they're going to charge us double on that day. So instead of $2,500 for the facility, it's going to be 5,000, and right now Smyrna High is the lucky school that ended up on that day. We do an order, we rotate the order every year. And then the following Tuesday, May 27th, would be the last graduation. So that's kind of where we are. We feel like that that's really the only option that we've got. I know that you'll probably get questions about why and why there, but that's just about all that we could find. The cost is, any kind of help that we could get with that, certainly we would appreciate because we just, we just take it out of our general fund as far as our graduations, so... And of course, Smyrna is going to get kind of the bad end of that deal because their particular date's going to be double, so if the board would consider helping us at all or have the means to help us at all with that, that would be much appreciated. Questions?
Question I've got, Ms. Vick, this, you said Wednesday and Thursday, and then Monday and Tuesday?
Did I skip Sunday? I did. They would do, they would accommodate two graduations on Sunday, May 25th.
Okay.
And I did skip that.
This is just a one-year deal, correct?
It's a one-year deal, that's the way we're going at it, that's the way we're looking at it, because it's just not convenient.
It's a nightmare of getting over there for graduation rehearsal.
Practices.
Is, I know, is going to be very difficult. Are you planning to do the rehearsal the morning of graduation?
That's our plan. That's our plan.
You'll just stay over there, right?
And we really have not worked out the details, like, for example, on the, on the Sunday graduations, when those practices would be.
Sure.
But yeah, it's going to be a nightmare. And, you know, we're pretty rigid about you have to be at practice or you don't walk, all of us are. But it's going to be a little more inconvenient to get to rehearsal.
Well, the only good news is, is you did find someplace, I was afraid you wouldn't find anything at all, other than outdoors, and I just, outdoors just scares me dead.
Well, it does, it does us, too. I mean, although we'd love to use our stadiums, I mean, we just didn't look at it as an option.
Actually, our stadium seat, what, 5,000?
Yeah.
Something like that. We typically even have more to the graduations than we can even put in our stadium, which is another interesting thing. MTSU did offer us their stadium.
They did.
But the weather issue is the piece.
And so many people, you know, plan with families coming out of town for that to be a set date and not really negotiable, but, you know, just dealing with all the issues that you would deal with if you got rained out or had to change a date, we just, none of us really wanted to deal with that. So that's why we were looking for an indoor facility that would, at best, accommodate us and not put us so far over our budget that we couldn't manage it.
I'm going to ask you another question, Ms. Vick, it may make sense, it may not. As far as your practices, you're talking about the practices. I know it's probably hard on some, probably some kids to get there. Have y'all looked, your committee looked at basically having some kind of bus?
We have not.
You know, I don't know how the board feels about it, but if there's some way, I don't know if it's something we could even look at, possibly help them out on. But I'd like to see, you know, I don't know how many buses you're talking about, probably four buses, I guess, or maybe more than that, I guess.
Well, I mean, we're, I know our class will be right at 500 next year, and we'll probably be one of the biggest.
Five or six buses, just for that. You know, I don't know if that's something worth looking into or not, but I'd say you're going to probably run into some kids getting older.
We are, we are. And of course, we all have our own buses, but we're also right in the middle of spring season when teams are going places and playing, and so if we could use school buses to get us there for rehearsals, that would help.
I'm just thinking when you got there, I'm just thinking it cut down on your hassle. Kids drifting in, drifting out, or whatever.
Right.
You load them up all at one time and take them over there and bring them back. But I don't know what kind of cost you'd be looking at.
We can figure it, we'll look into it if...
You've got 90 passenger buses, but that's not all high school, you get full of high...
Yeah.
That's what I was thinking, you're not going to be, it'll be there.
I think another question we have to at least consider, and Terry, I think it's a great idea because there's going to be some kids that just don't have the means to get there, bum rides, and they left out and don't have anything. So there's going to be some stragglers that are going to absolutely need that transportation.
That's right.
I'm thinking in terms of we've got to provide something there, I think.
Look, if you were going to try to bus them all, you know, with a cost of 500, you're looking at about seven, maybe.
I would say, I would, I would say consider allowing them to transport themselves if they want to do it that way, and then those that need the transportation, we provided for, we provided for as many as wanted. But also maybe consider giving them the option, and I think we need to obviously think in terms of that point, what liability we've got if we offer transportation to some, or we putting ourselves liable if a kid has an accident on the way over there back, that situation. That's, that'd have to be decided today, but I'm very much in favor of bringing some type of option for students that don't have ways to get there otherwise.
Well, we can figure the cost if you all can...
I'm sure you can.
Help us with it, and find the drivers. I mean, of course, you're going to have to, we're going to have to work out the time so that the, if we're using school buses that run a regular route, they've got to finish the route, get us there for the practice, and then they've got to get back.
Well, you're looking at, at worst-case scenario, I would think, an hour's drive there, a couple hours before rehearsal and back. Four-hour weather, should be able to get that, wouldn't we be able to fit a four-hour drive into, into school day and you do your rehearsal based upon what the buses allow you to do, that I would think that would work.
Seven to eight, it depends on if you give them the option of driving themselves. Probably what we need to do is get a gradual, get a rehearsal schedule. In other words, work that out with Williamson County, so that we can know, like, for example, the, the Sunday graduations, when are they going to practice? And, and get that back to you, so you'll know, kind of, how many are we talking about? What kind of timeframes are we talking about? There may be two practices in a day with two different schools.
It'd have to be at least two practices, or have them show up two hours early before graduation.
Right.
Because that's what you do.
Which would make me very nervous.
A lot of them, they realize when you tell them that's what you do in college, they're like, oh, okay, you show up two hours before time and say, let's walk.
Right.
So are you going to price for the entire student class to be transported and then come up with another scenario where we're just looking for those like Mr. Taggett said?
Wanted to, basically come down to what per, it's going to be a per-bus cost, right? And once we find a per-bus cost, we figure out that we want it, we're going to do it times seven for every school, or times two for every school, or whatever, but I think that's, I think that's a decision that the board will have to make at that point in time, whether we're going to, if we do the bus thing, we require every student to ride the bus, or we are able to give them an option. I would guess, in my thinking, you've got much more experience at this high school than I do, I would think you wouldn't need more than a couple buses to go if you give them the option to drive.
I think you're right.
I, I think most students would take that.
They're going to want to drive themselves. If they are given an option, they're going to choose the option to drive themselves if they have that transportation, but there will be some.
You'll need, you'll need one bus at least, I would think, for every, every school, maybe a couple.
Yeah, I think so. Well, it depends on what's going on. Do you know what I'm saying? I mean, our buses, I mean, I've got one gone to FFA convention right now, one gone to a baseball game, one, you know what I'm saying? They're just, and it's kind of hard to know right now what we'll be doing May 25th and 2014.
I would prefer if we do go this route, we keep activity buses out of the process, and we just, we do, we consider the board finding the funds to provide, at least provide those buses.
That would help us.
I'd like to know, is there a liability if the kids are driving theirself and taking friends over there at the request of us? Or is there any liability we have?
I would not be concerned about liability in that case.
Okay.
That's their own choice, if they choose to do that, it's not going to open up or expose the board to any liability in that regard.
And will we also be having, maybe, provide the service on graduation day to get them, for like the stragglers who may not be able to drive over there?
I hadn't considered that, honestly, I hadn't.
I mean, you could consider, most of them will have a parent or something that, that time, that graduation time.
I personally would not be concerned about that at that point in time, that's, that falls in that category, you want to find a way to get there, you'll find it.
They're motivated for that.
I know they're motivated to graduate, I understand that.
Well, the parents are bound to.
There's still that, still that one or two that would, may need to have the option to have, have a way over there.
Unfortunately, we have some time to kind of discern some of this between now and then, too, so...
Well, our committee will meet again, we'll work on a rehearsal schedule, we'll also discuss these things and try to give you a little bit more feedback, because like you say, we do have a little bit of time, but we don't want to wait till next, this time next year and be having this discussion either.
You haven't, we haven't, in fact, signed contracts with them.
No, we have not, but they have us penciled in.
Okay.
Yeah, they're holding the dates for us, but we have not signed anything.
Do we need to take board action on that call?
I don't know what they told you about how quickly you have to do something on that.
They're not pushing us. I think they feel pretty good that we want to come because they know we don't have much other option. But we'd like to go ahead and sign something with the, with the board's approval, to commit to it, because I mean, we don't really have another option other than this.
Why don't you do this, Ms. Vick, you could possibly make a phone call, and we'll go through the formality, see if they can wait till, see if you can get them something in April, if not, call, you know, call Ms. Michaels back and possibly do, add something on the agenda Thursday.
Okay. I'll do that.
Ms. Vick, what was the charge at Murphy Center again, per high school?
Right at $5,300, plus incidentals that we might incur ourselves.
In conversation among the committee, was the extra burden on Smyrna High School discussed as, sure hate it for you, or I assume it's one contract, is there any sentiment among the principals that it would be appropriate to just divide seven ways equally?
No, we didn't have that conversation. We, we discussed that when I came to talk to the board about it, that we would see if the board would be willing to help Smyrna.
Good question, Ms. Paul. It's my, my personal opinion, we've got plenty of time on this, but it's not Smyrna's fault.
I would say this, and I don't know how it's been done the last six or seven years for sure, but I know when I was there that each school kind of took care of bringing their own ferns and this and that and the other. I would hope at least in this case, we'd consider doing something like that and taking whatever it is on Wednesday and leave it there and all the way through Tuesday, something like that.
Well, from what I understand, like at Murphy Center, the ferns that we use, they provided because they insisted on that, but we each paid for them, even though they just sat there. Yeah.
Last time I remember, we had, we, I remember carrying them in myself.
Do you really?
Yeah. So anyway, whatever happens like that, I think that that might be an appropriate thing to look at, see what they have available.
Sure.
Again, let that be a shared cost amongst each school.
Okay. We'll look at it and get some information and get it back to you. Is that good?
It'll be good.
Okay. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Number ten, Mr. Olden.
Number ten, under old business is rezoning for Blackman Elementary School. Enrollment at Blackman Elementary School reached one thousand one hundred and twelve students at the close of the sixth month, which was February twenty-fifth, representing a growth of one hundred and six students over the six months last year. Most of our city schools is proceeding with the construction of a new elementary school at Veterans Parkway and Highway ninety-six to be open for the two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year. To accommodate anticipated growth at Blackman Elementary School, it is recommended that the Blackman Elementary area north of I twenty-four be rezoned to Brown's Chapel School effective for the two thousand thirteen, fourteen school year. The motion is to adjust the Blackman Elementary School attendance zone by moving the Blackman Elementary area north of I twenty-four into the Brown's Chapel Elementary School zone beginning in two thousand thirteen, fourteen. Blackman Elementary students rising to grade five, and their siblings will have the option of continuing enrollment in Blackman Elementary School. And you have a map. This is part of what we had covered when we had our open meetings and that sort of thing. It's, it's the kinda hatched area, lined in with the yellow line. Uh, this is the enrollment for this year, so what we will be talking about. See, there's thirty-seven students this year in that zone. Of course, you don't know how many kindergarten will have exactly, but it should be similar. If we, uh, do the sibling option there, the fourth grade would move up to fifth next year, so there's ten students there. And then, um, Mr. Morgan has calculated the siblings that we know of there, which is seven. So you'd have seventeen, basically. So what you're moving is basically twenty students, or somewhere in, in that range. Now, um, our goal, i- it was kind of this. We talked about, we talked with, uh, Ms. Ford and all there. She can, next year for one year, place her two art and music, as we do in some of our other schools, on a cart. Basically, that opens three rooms. Uh, if we can get at least one room to Brown's Chapel or somewhere like that, that would be about the equivalent we had for growth this year. You know that moving a portal was a little over twenty thousand dollars, basically, to us, and you'd be doing it for one year. So basically, that's why I'm coming with this recommendation, that we look at that, that's an area that is reasonably close, and probably, um, would be in the Blackman zone anyway. Now, I can tell you, Ms. Gustrie actually told me last week, she's already had about seven people from, maybe because we had the hearing out there and all, that had come to her and said, I'm, I'm gonna apply to come to Brown's Chapel next year anyway. And so she signed those, and I said, that's great, you know? So, uh, it's just an attempt to see if we can get by with existing rather than moving another portable. But to do that, I think, if we have another growth of around one hundred, um, we, we would have to at least move one area.
Anybody got any questions?
I think it's an appropriate measure. I, I wonder, is there, with the public forums that we've already had, in consideration of this? I don't feel that this specific modification would require an additional, uh, public forum outside of the board meetings. Uh, is there any consideration that has been given for that or anything?
This was in the area that we considered all along, and we talked about particular areas, but we did, I mean, it was included in the original hearings. It's not new to those.
I think another thing, you, you may, everybody's aware of, we hope the, the city's gonna build that school out there, but we don't have any guarantees. This, this is what we're gonna do right now, uh, whether they put their school there or not. So, yeah, maybe this time next year, we have to roll, roll, roll around, open, look at this whole situation again. I don't know. But this is what we're trying to do for this coming year. I just feel like we need to make sure that's clear to everybody that, uh, you know, the following year, we may be back at it again. I don't know.
Anybody else? Number eleven, Mr. Olden.
Number eleven is substitute teachers. Staff recommends that the board award the contract for substitute teachers to advantage resourcing as the best and lowest provider for this service. Only two proposals met the requirements of our request for proposals, and advantages by far the lower cost of service for the two thousand thirteen, fourteen school year, when you look at the, the pre-healthcare rates through December thirty-first, two thousand thirteen, and the post-healthcare rates after January first, two thousand fourteen. The contract can be extended by mutual agreement for two years after the two thousand thirteen, fourteen school year. The recommended approval, motion to award the contract for providing substitute teachers to advantage resourcing. And Ms. Barnes is here if we have additional questions, but you have to kinda look at that tab, too, and you can kinda see the breakdown in the division. Um, one was a little bit cheaper on the first half, but the second half was considerably more expensive, so that's, that's what you have to look at, both pieces of that.
And this is the entity that presently is serving us, correct?
Exactly. One, one we have now.
Is this same type of matrix available for the contract that is expiring, for the sake of comparison?
It would be in the minutes of the board agenda, and then our files, yes.
We could look that up.
If we could see that, so we could see the relative increase, uh, I, I know that Mr. Sandvik has told us that there is an increase here, but we're getting the best deal. To see it in this breakdown would be helpful.
We can do that.
Anybody else? Number twelve, Mr. Olden.
Twelve is courses offered addendum for credit in grades nine through twelve. Board of Education Policy four point two oh one states in part, a listing of addendum courses offered for credit in grades nine through twelve will be approved annually by the board. Recommend approval, motion to approve the list of courses for credit in Rutherford County Schools, grades nine through twelve for two thousand thirteen, fourteen as presented. We do have to list courses to, to kinda let you know, because our software prints, um, transcripts, and so you have to carry courses, sometimes even though they're gone, so that if you, if you just delete them, then a student that comes in in a year or two later, transcript will be complete. So there is some software pieces there that you have to deal with in listing courses also.
I had a slight interest in, uh, strength and conditioning, uh, health and physical education, titled the Strength and Conditioning Course. I think I understand what that course is, but give me a characterization.
It's basically weightlifting, and I, um, Ms. Vick would have been a good one, but she was one of the ones, I think she's already stepped out. Um, through a lot of your athletic programs, and for some other students, there is, there's weightlifting, conditioning, another health and P E. Uh, when we went to the, uh, basically seven-period day, through four years, you have twenty-eight. We require twenty-three credits to graduate, so the students actually have an additional five credits. So I think the principals felt when that happened, and they had the additional courses, that it gave them a chance to offer this for some of those students, too. But typically, they'll be athletes. They would be those girls sitting over here this evening, probably.
I, I think probably a large majority of those classes, maybe better than ninety percent,
Could be.
would be students participating in athletics.
I, I think the one thing we make sure we guard against is make sure coaches don't make it a class exclusive to their teams. And I, I know that that's a desire, well, I won't say desire, once upon a time, that's just basically the way it was. And, uh, we wanna be sure that we recognize that those courses are available to all students, uh, if they can fit it in their academic day.
We'll communicate that to them.
Anybody else? Thirteen.
Thirteen is special courses addendum request. Instruction department is requesting permission to amend the application to offer credit for special courses under the following guidelines, and that's Rule zero five twenty-one, three point oh five dash two A. Local school systems may offer special courses not listed in five twenty-one dash three dash point oh six on an experimental basis. Commissioner of Education must approve each course in advance each year. After three years, the course may become permanent part of the local school program upon approval by the State Board of Education. After three years, the special courses requested must be re-submitted if the teacher listed on the application changes. Recommend approval, motion to approve Rutherford County amending application for new special courses to be offered in the name schools for two thousand thirteen, fourteen as presented. Part of these are for Stewart's Creek High School. If you looked at the tab, you remember the dental, that just, which is a brand-new program for us and is new for the state, so much of that.
There's some other courses here that are CTE courses. Because the, the board approved, uh, the courses for the following year, last month, because of that school policy, it conflicted by the end of February, but the CTE department and the State Department won't release theirs until March, so we do it each year. We'll approve one set for our general end, especially if, if it comes back into an addendum for the CTE classes, just because of the way the State Department operates. That's why you're seeing this a second time.
All right, Mr. Olden.
Fourteen is facilities. School of the Year for Excellence in Architectural Design. The Tennessee School Boards Association's annual convention is November ninth through eleventh, two thousand thirteen, at the Gaylord Opera Land Resort and Convention Center. The president of the TSBA appoints a panel of judges to consider nominations and make the final selection for four categories of excellence in architectural design. New school construction in elementary division, middle, junior high, and high school, renovation and remodeling. All judging will be done prior to the convention this year. Participating architectural firms will have booth space at the annual convention exhibit hall, and display all of the firm's public school architectural work. In accordance with TSBA policy, entries may include any building that was or will be occupied between November the first, two thousand ten, and November the first, two thousand thirteen. Local Board of Education approval is necessary for all entries. The deadline for submitting entry forms, along with the required information and the appropriate fees to TSBA, is September the thirtieth, two thousand thirteen. Stewart's Creek High School fits into this time slot. Awards will be made, be made, made based solely on the material and information provided to the judges. In past years, Rutherford County School Board has received awards from TSBA for Segal Middle School from Gould Turner Group, two thousand two, Segal High School from Binkley Garcia Architects in two thousand four, and Stewart's Creek Elementary School from Binkley Garcia Architects in two thousand and seven. The recommended approval, the motion is to approve submittal of Stewart's Creek High School to the Tennessee School Boards Association as an entry into the School of the Year for Excellence in Architectural Design for two thousand thirteen. Binkley Garcia Architects will submit the entry form and materials to TSBA. I think we have a good chance on this one.
I'll try to be a judge again this year.
I'm gonna put the burden on you then.
I said try, Mr. Chairman. B.
B is Smyrna Middle School Kitchen Hood Design and Construction Management Proposal. Halk Mechanical has submitted a construction management design proposal at the request of Rutherford County Schools Engineering and Construction Department for the removal and replacement of the kitchen hood located at Smyrna Middle School. The total budget cost of the kitchen hood design and replacement is one hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. The cost includes the design and isolation, uh, and installation of a new exhaust hood system, new hood, exhaust supply risers, filters, electrical roofing, fire suppression, gas valve, up blasting, up blasted exhaust, make-up air with natural gas, reheat, modulating energy management system, factory startup, electrical ceiling, appliance relocation, and site cleanup. Site survey, submittal of design documents and submission for review by State Fire Marshal associated permits. Halk Mechanical completed the kitchen hood replacements in eight schools in two thousand seven, two thousand eight, and has previously completed all HVAC renovations in the past eight years. Rutherford County Schools Engineering and Construction Department is convinced and confident that this is the appropriate, timelyst, and least expensive approach for this project. The recommend approval, motion to approve the Smyrna Middle Kitchen Hood Design and Construction Management Proposal submitted by Halk Mechanical in an amount of one hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, which includes all work associated with the design and replacement of the kitchen hood system located at Smyrna Middle School. And this is coming about because of an inspection requirement, basically.
I guess that comes out after you're gone anyhow, doesn't it?
It does.
Any questions? Number fifteen.
Fifteen is the board has requested to review the decision of disciplinary hearing authority to uphold the expulsion of a student from Blackman High School. The student was expelled for one calendar year under the board's zero tolerance policy for possessing marijuana on school property. This review is pursuant to the provision of policy six point three one seven. The policy states the board shall review the record and, and shall, one, affirm the decision of the DHA, or overturn the decision of the DHA, three, modify the decision of the DHA to a lesser penalty, except in cases of zero tolerance violations, or four, grant a second hearing, which would be before the board, or deny a request for a board hearing. I believe you have that packet.
Everybody take a look at that, and, uh, before Thursday night, if you would. Number sixteen.
Um, Ms. George, that one didn't come up on mine, did it? Have you got it? Is it handed out? Okay. Sixteen is termination of tenured teacher, appointment of independent hearing officer. The director of schools has sustained charges against Brenda Mathis, a tenured teacher from Smyrna Middle School. State law allows a tenured teacher to have a hearing before an impartial hearing officer if he or she chooses to contest the termination of his or her employment. Ms. Mathis has requested a hearing, and the Board of Education therefore needs to appoint someone to serve as a hearing officer in this matter. Mr. Toby Gillie has expressed his willingness to serve in this capacity, is selected to do so by the board. Mr. Gillie is a local practicing attorney and has served in this capacity previously. The recommend approval, the motion is to approve the appointment of Toby Gillie as the impartial hearing officer for the termination hearing of Brenda Mathis.
Ms. Paul.
I believe we may find that this is an error on the agenda. Uh, I think in our last board meeting, we took action on this. Uh, if there's an update on that, we may, I, I may be corrected.
You sustained the charges at the last meeting against his employee, but she has thirty days to appeal, and this, she has requested an appeal, so we now have the monitoring option.
Oh, okay. All right.
Within five days, and so that's why it's been added to your agenda tonight. We received that today or yesterday?
I remember last time, uh, David and I disclosed that we knew Toby and, uh, thought he was an excellent candidate, so, uh, once again, Thursday night, we'll do the same.
Number seventeen, general discussion.
The only thing that I would say, I sent you some information about the request for us to, to join, uh, the achievement, and you have a copy of that. Would not want to do that unless it was your will as a board to do that, so, um, that's why we could Thursday night, and make a motion, or one of you could make a motion Thursday evening. But, um, you have a copy there of, um, the objectives of that organization, and you can also, I produced you a copy of other districts and organizations that are already members of SCORE. Like, it's a SCORE organization. It's not, this is not SCORE itself, but it's, SCORE is the driving force.
And tomorrow is the, uh, Teacher of the Year, uh, celebration. Ambition, ambition, three thirty. Little different location, so, uh, it's one of the fun things that we get to do.
Mr. Adam, I took a look at the Expect More, Achieve More, uh, details that you sent us via email, and, uh, expressed to you that I thought that it was, uh, a good, uh, effort. And, uh, I, I would anticipate then Thursday night, when we request, uh, questions on the agenda, uh, that if no other board members find an objection before then, that we would add that to the agenda Thursday evening and, uh, and seek approval.
Sometimes you can do more in an organization than you can outside of an organization. I have been asked to, uh, next week. have been asked to, uh, next week, there is a conference call that I'm a part of. They're looking at their policy and the things that they're recommending, um, so I'll be a part of that. I've also been asked to serve on a panel in Nashville near the end of April, um, with part of the organization also. They're, they're actually beginning to develop their plan for the next school year.
Mr. Olden, at our last board meeting, we had some citizens who raised questions about, uh, social studies and handouts. Uh, is there any plan for a response to the board's concerns?
In, in April, we did, we're going to report back in April. Uh, we, we looked at the, the book. The materials that were used were not, um, from Halt, they were from another source. But we'll come back with you and do some reports in April, try to put it all together. It was a teacher selection of those documents. Thank you.
Mr. Ties, let me make a brief report. Uh, Mr. Evans, Mr. Zago, and myself spent today in Metro Schools, uh, training for charter school applications. And, uh, we've, we've got some valuable information. From, it's my understanding, at this point in time, we have a letter of interest toward the application and, and have until April the first for that application to actually hit. I don't, I don't sense that we know for sure whether that will or will not happen. But if it does, then we'll, we'll, we'll have, uh, we'll have a timeline. In your Dropbox, I hope, is, is, uh, some information there that you can look at, you can find the timeline, how, how that's supposed to work. So, you can take a look at that between now and Thursday, if you like, and ask any of us any questions, uh, about that. Uh, you, you know, if, if, if the charter school application comes, I'm satisfied that we'll be better ha, prepared to handle the application, and we'll be able to do so. You guys can add anything you want.
You said it well. They had a great foundation given to us today to, to, uh, make a few changes as we see fit to make it, if Rutherford County needs, uh, lots of great information and knowledge, as a warm-up, some state representatives that have been able to.
I would say this, if, if, if we do get to the point where we need to make the application, I would, I ask the question, I think it would be wise on our part to talk with them or someone that's gone through that application process so that we don't wander through this all by ourselves the first time through, even though I know we've got capable people. But, uh, they know some of the pitfalls that they're looking for, and I think that we want to make sure we look at those things.
The, how this started, we, um, the directors of this area meet together, and I did get to meet with Mr. Jesse Register sometime, and, um, it was kind of one of the items that we discussed. And, and he said there was a, a group, uh, that actually meets, and it's not just Metro, Davidson County, it was other areas where it might be. And I said, "Sure would like to be included." Well, the next day, he sent me an email, he contacted his person. Next day, we got the information about who was the person heading it out. So, the emails and the things that you see now, um, they were gracious enough to include us and be a part of that. So, I was, I was very pleased with that.
Chairman, I was, uh, very disappointed yesterday to observe the, uh, State House of Representatives, uh, pass a resolution that the Senate had already passed, and I have every expectation that the governor will sign. It takes away our, uh, local school board's ability to regulate participation of homeschool students in T double S double A athletics. And, uh, I'd like for us as a board to take a look at the implications of that, uh, legislation as it pertains to our policy and, uh, be prepared to make the necessary adjustments, uh, for, for it to come into place.
Uh, I'm, I'm good with that. I mean, uh, you know, I've got my own views on that, that whole situation. Uh, T double S double A, I think they were behind it, uh, pushing it. It, it, it still behooves me, uh, when we had Central Magnet apply, uh, you know, play sports at their zone schools and T double S double A turn that down. So, uh, I think it's, I think they're opening the floodgates for other things to come down the pipe here. You know, it's just like the charter schools vouchers and all that. Uh, if, if, if it doesn't cost us as taxpayers a bundle of money, I'd be surprised.
It, it seems very surprising to me that we would still be considering the school voucher question, which will in essence take resources out of the classroom. And yet, in the action yesterday, uh, we added to the potential burden on the athletic fields. Uh, the two just don't seem to go together to a exemplary school system for public education.
I agree. Anybody else?
I would ask that each of the board members look at your revised, uh, board meeting dates.
First, no. If nobody has any problems with that, we'll, we'll go with this new schedule. So, if you can, take a look at it. Any changes, let you know by Thursday, at that time. Anything else?
No, sir.
Nothing else?
See you tomorrow.
What's that?
See you tomorrow for the Teacher of the Year.
Tomorrow at three thirty. We're adjourned.